December fourteenth, this call is in order.
I want the motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of December seventh.
Second.
Any discussion of changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
For the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Michael, we have anybody online?
Josh, do we have anybody online?
One person, Jane Johnson.
Jane, have anything to say before we go to the people who are here? Not waving their hand?
Not waving their hand.
Anybody else have it? It looks like everybody else is here for a purpose, as in public input, so we'll get right to the agenda. Mary, how you doing? Welcome.
The reason why I'm here is because we have two new members. If selectmen okay them for the museum.
Did you vet them thoroughly? Did you do a thorough background check?
Did you do a background check? Oh, well, didn't need to.
Oh, even better.
I've known Judy Berry ever since she was like this. And Ed Reed has been around here for quite some time.
Great. All right, anybody else have any comment?
Okay, I make the motion to appoint Ed Reed and Judy Berry to the Swansea Museum Committee?
I'll second that.
I guess you know them. You want to be sure they know they have your support.
Would you prefer...
He hasn't voted on it yet.
I just decided I wanted to move the question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome. Thank you very much. We're all set, Mary, thank you. You're all set, yep.
Back in the cold.
Be careful on the ice.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sewer Commission Chair Larry Crowder, how we doing?
Good.
He's going to go to the guest of honor chair.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, Larry.
Gentlemen?
Nice to see you.
Okay, budget, so quick. This is the first year that we've done a budget since we hired a private operator, which is WSL plus. So there's a little, maybe it's just a lot of line items and so forth. And so, having done that, where we are is with North Swansea, proposed budget is an increase of 5.76%. And most of that is due to, well, a lot of it in North is due to electricity and the other part of it is due to contract operations. Where we spread out the contract operations is potentially divided by two-thirds for West and a third for North. So bump North up just a little bit. So that's part of the increase. West Swansea, proposed budget has an increase of 9.81%. And the biggest part of that, you can probably see if you have a budget sheet, is electricity, obviously. I mean, we spent, what did you say, 25,000?
It was 25,000, now we're projecting 37,000.
So that was a big portion of the West Swansea increase. And then the other portion was testing the chemicals, which obviously both have gone up. We have one that would come in and test our sampling house several times a year. And obviously, the price of chemicals have gone up. And then the North Swansea path through with the users, it's up 7.14%. And basically, we added a line item from maintenance improvements. We've never had that before, but if you're not familiar with this, this is the Matthews Road sewer name that goes through Keane's lines and also the 10 market basket from the Swansea lines to Market Basket. That portion of the sewer is in pretty good shape. We've never really cleaned Matthews Road from the Swansea lines to the West. We're thinking about doing that next year. But it's a good thing to have in there. We haven't done it, we haven't had any problems there, but it's a good maintenance purpose.
How often do you recommend doing that?
I think sewer mains depend on main, but we, there's a formula out there, but we try to clean, we appropriate X amount of money every year to deal with so many feet. But all of our pipe is all SBR35 for most of the system. We've had one sewer stoppage in 15 years in North Swansea. Scott checks the manholes, and if we see a problem, we will address it and have it cleaned. But it's a hard number, because we don't have a big grease problem, because there's not a lot of restaurants in that system. Places like Keane, some areas, it just builds up. So part of that equation is the use and what you see in your main when you look in it. And ours are always pretty darn clean, but we still should do like 20% of our mains per year.
So every five years?
Roughly, yeah, it would be a good five to seven years.
I mean, in that five-year period, all the lines are clear?
Yeah.
And all of it serviced?
Yeah, we're five miles in the main in North, so you get a mile a year, which is probably around $2,000 a day to do that. It's probably even more, yeah, that's a pretty good number, just for budgeting purposes. And we don't anticipate a rate increase for this budget. We seem to always have money left over in our budgets. But I will caution everyone that a rate increase is probably going to be necessary in West Swansea within the next several years, because we're looking at doing, oh, you guys, I'm a length up here, you guys will be taking it home. But we're looking at, you know, a significant increase in upgrading the plant. We're talking millions. So right now, we're okay, but I don't think we're saving enough money. And I think in the future, we'll talk about that and try and, I don't think we've had a rate increase in West Swansea in 30 years, which obviously, everything else has gone up, and we kind of wiggle the way of the way through all this. But I'm telling you, the West has some of the cheaper sewer rates in state. So the time is coming to really look at West seriously, because the other part is we're getting close to, not flow-wise capacity, but treatment-wise capacity, and we're due for a new permit here. Who knows? We're doing it today now, that could be five years from now. But if they add more testing for different types of things, then we're going to have to up the plan, upgrade the plant to treat whatever they want. Right now, we're treating pretty much just phosphorus, is what they're getting back. So that's just food for thought coming down the road, but it's, you know, you're talking at least a $3 million upgrade for that plant.
What do we have in reserves now?
What do we have in reserves now? We have two different accounts. We have one for West and one for North. And then we have our, what do we call it, Michael? I call it funds.
We don't call it a slush fund.
I call it a slush fund, but I know it's not. Over the years, anything that's locked over at each budget cycle, we put into either the capital reserve or the fund balance. And I think there's 700 and something thousand in the fund balance in this.
I can get the capital reserve end of year last year number two.
Thank you, sir.
Well, he's looking that up. I have a question with regard to the capital reserve. In both cases, you've reduced, oh, in 2021 to 2022, the amount increased, and then 22 to 23, it's decreased. So were the expectation of the bonding needed, is there a reason why you're recommending a decrease?
Part of the decrease that was in West was last year, we paid off a bond for the upgrades to the West. So we increased the capital by 60,000 from 25, because we took the majority of that bond money and put it in there. We put something to some other areas. This year, we had to run the capital a little bit today to keep the rate, to keep the increase down. We run, we run and find.
Yeah, it was about 25,000.
So we're still putting in more than we were prior, but we had to run 25,000, it was like 60,000.
And this year is 30,000.
Yes.
And North, you're going from 25,000 to 20,000.
Yes, and that's to offset that. And also, I won't, we finally have a capital improvements program. And capital improvements wise in North, pre-world set. In West, again, I'm just raising the flag for West, because it's going to be major upgrades. And I think it's very important that it's potential for live development in West. We're at the point, treatment-wise, where we might be closer to the max out, not fall-wise, but treatment-wise. But if anyone comes down the road with a new permitting and all that, you know, we might just have to say, we can't take it anymore. We're in good shape in North. We're only using 12% to 15% of our capacity that we can send to Keane. And that, you know, with all this new development in North, I think that's going to bump us up to 135, 40, maybe 50%. So we're in good shape in North as far as what we can send to Keane, but our lot in this, which is, I think, 280,000. We're in good shape there. Again, West is the one that is going to need some attention coming down the road.
With the plant's upgrade, do you see the footprint having to get bigger? We're going to have to buy some land, or?
Depends. It depends what type of upgrade we do. If we put in clarifiers, we could probably do it with the same footprint, which I think is, and I'm not an expert on this. Lagoons are kind of going out, so to speak. So maybe we'll look, we have clarifiers or some type of special treatment building. We may be keeping lagoons, but again, lagoons are kind of a dining room. So that part I'm not sure of, but I do get some estimates from Underwood. Pretty much they're saying it's $20,000 to $25,000 per gallon every day we fill. We design the plant, the plant is designed for 160,000 gallons a day. So to do that, it gives you pretty much a ballpark idea of the upgrade cost. Again, we're still in the early stages of this. We're going to try and finalize Underwood's report. Right now, Underwood's working on a report, where we are with the plant, where we need to go, and then we'll move forward. finalize a report, which should be the first of the year.
What's that? The West Swansea Capital Reserve for sewer has about 200,000.
How much is it?
About 200,000.
200,000, I thought you said.
And then there's a separate fund for West, line extensions, that has 87,000.
You still have that in there? You hiding it from me? What is, do you have what North has?
354, that's before whatever went in last year.
Yeah, and then the other part of North is too, we met with Keane last week. Keane was not sending some bills from upgrades to the Keane plant. We have to pay 4.7% for that upgrade, and so there'll be some bills coming in. Out of that, things in the last two years, it's getting us bills, which isn't a big deal. But we have to pay some of the West. But we're in good shape in North, because it's all laid out. We have Keane's, what Keane's going to do for the plant. And then we have route moves scheduled along this for the building, for the two conversations and all that, so.
You want to mention that word of wisdom you mentioned to me about anyone came asking about selling or getting rid of the share that we own of North?
Oh.
Not that we think that's likely, but.
No, well, just, no one said, before our meeting with Keane, you know, part of our meeting was to see if they wanted to pick over the operators of North, because it's right next to their plant, and on those, to their plant. And we have two conversations there. Me, in my mind, it makes sense, depending on what they recharge. And then we just focus on West. But part of the conversation I had with Michael and Joe before we went there is if anyone in Keane ever said, would you like to sell some of your, we will buy back some of your 4.7% of the plant? Please don't let him do that, because we've paid that pennies on the dollar compared to now. And we've also paid for all the upgrades over the last 20-something, 25 years, 30, 35 years, that supplies may go wrong. And so they're a big investment, plus it's a big investment for the whole town. We have 280,000 gallons a day, we're using 35,000 right now. And that pump station, and everything was designed to take in all of North Swansea, the fairgrounds, the other side of Route 12, 10-year side. So the design is there to take in the industrial park offices, even if you put a huge development up on fairgrounds, we have the capacity to develop North Swansea sewer-wise. I don't know about wires, but that's something I, you know, but so. My only question to Michael was, just don't ever give up that 4.7% that we own to the plant, because you never get back. In Keane's, Keane's plant is designed for 6 million gallons, and they're not anywhere in here passing. So I don't think anyone would ever ask, I'm just thinking down the road years from now, when things get tough and.
Someone daigles what seems like a lot of money.
A lot of money, but it's not worth it. It's absolutely not worth it. It's Swansea's interest.
Thank you, Larry.
Okay.
Appreciate the words of wisdom.
Hopefully, the wisdom can find out.
Food for thought, anyway.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Larry.
So it started all the tough budget questions that Ken has prepared for you?
Yeah, or help officer?
Emergency management.
Okay, the only increases were telephone internet, the rate notification system, and tools for generating. Everything else is the same.
And then a decrease in the planning grant, that was for the hazard mitigation.
Yeah, we removed that.
That down almost 13%.
I just had a couple of questions. The salaries, are they being utilized?
Are salaries being utilized?
And we, this is running through the end of October, with a budget of 3,007,50 has been collected.
So what we've done since Pam was gracious enough to become, I think you still consider yourself at least interim board's director, which was just going to be a short time in 2019, and then of course, COVID and everything else, so she stayed on. So because she does that, and help officer, and the time is somewhat, a lot of it, especially with COVID, was basically the same time for both. We've just posted all of her time to help officer. So when you're seeing when you get down there, we were over last year, probably come in right around budget this year. But so we've just been posting all of her time to help officer versus trying to guesstimate what's emergency management, help officer. So, but we've left that 2,000. So it was 2,000 and 2,000 for the stipends. Joe does 1,000 and a little bit of leave time. And then, so Pam, who just posted all of her time to help officer, what she is accurately reporting, the time she works.
And then with regard to the notification system?
Right.
At the end of October, you were at 4,300, rounding up. And you're only asking for another $200?
Right. According to last, that's about how much they want.
So you wouldn't end up over budget next year?
Shouldn't.
Because you're over budget now. Not quite a lot, but I just want to be sure you've got enough.
Well, I think that when we did the budget last year, we didn't know there was going to be an increase at that time. And we did get an increase, so.
Well, it seems like it's gone up a couple hundred years.
Not major. Not major.
Not major, no. She has a slush fund here, so she definitely has a slush fund, which she'd use it. All right. Health officers?
It looks like it's only increased to 150% salary.
I think I was just rounding it off, too, so.
No, nothing else is said.
All right. One fine, Pam, you're all.
Do the committee have this board now?
Yes.
Okay.
So they got a copy here, yeah.
So last year, help officers were mandated to do maintenance reports to pass the board out. The lecture was my first. And this one is not a whole lot different from last year's. The three major concerns were housing maintenance and communication. Some of them improved, and hopefully, then might be some changes coming up that will help evolve them. As far as housing, those 500 new housing units, they've improved their own planning. And several ADUs that have been approved, we're in the process, and I'm trying to see if they're going to be. Have you been approved yet or in the process? As far as property maintenance, we did talk about this last year. We actually are meeting next week to look at our Swansea Health and Public Health Standards Annual. I have some checklists from product discipline, see how we can incorporate everything, bring it forward. And as far as communication, I've really increased how I reach out now to people. And social media, they're using the message board. I use the post offices, recycling centers, that's a big one, the libraries, computers, stores. Nearly two boards, so I do a lot of postings there when there's information that needs to share. It was primary during the COVID vaccine clinic that we were hosting. But I also reach out to the SAU and make sure the information is, teachers and faculty and the students and the families. And the same, like, we had a COVID clinic in the summer, I was reaching out to 10, so communication has improved. Also, it's more hours to meet up to people. Just ahead.
Do you feel that the new standards that you're going to be working on will help to address the concerns you have with property maintenance?
I think so.
What kind of enforcement?
Well, right now, it's home health and fire, but just dispatches. So I think we'll just, if our manuals or guidelines can be improved, or we took different checklists to see if we could collaborate on.
I think just to supplement Pam's answer, I think what's kind of stalled this in the past is we start getting too deep down the and then what, and then what. And I think we just need to kind of get started and be a little bit, not loose with kind of, but just need to get started and get it integrated and get a sense of how it's working, and then kind of see what works, what doesn't. But try, well, okay, then we tell them they need to fix it, and they say no. Then the person's homeless, how does that? So I think try to work collaboratively, you know, with a informational and collaboratively, I hope that is helpful, Mark. But just got to get started and start to implement it and see what works and what doesn't.
Yeah, but I also have the same concern between, we're four of us, five of us, they've got to deal with it. It's just going to really rely heavily on second-hand support, which we've always enjoyed and appreciate that. And flexibility of when to go to whose house the rest of the week. They have the rigid plan that a lot of other towns have, it's not all that practical, obviously. If somebody's an edge, we've been edge, we're not worried about that. It's the other places that we know we're worried about, and trying to get in there, trying to make the headway we can there. And I think we'll be finally come up to this, we're going to have one meeting, I think if we take one meeting, comparing back to you guys what we're hoping to do, and just as long as we get your support, everything will be in good shape.
About all the campers that are popping up?
Yeah.
I think they're living, though.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, you know, and I've definitely got a couple that are on my board that we're dealing with. Two of them I'm talking to the police with right now. And it's definitely starting to happen more and more. And, you know, there's a couple of them that I'm worried about now that I just don't have access to, legal access to. You don't know, I don't know how hard I'm going to work to get that, how much money I'm going to spend on that effort. But I'm hoping that once the word gets out there that, but there's a lot of landlords that have problem properties. Don't come to town for that reason. That's not what we necessarily want, per se. But what it really breaks down to is we don't want to be paying for anything that's substandard. Effectively, we're spending taxpayer dollars, and we want to get value for that dollar. And that's the primary goal way off the bat. And then, of course, the answer, the feeling that somebody's either cleaned up and gone would be wonderful.
Sure would. Anybody have anything else, Ken?
No. Anybody else?
Appreciate it. Thanks for all you do.
Thanks, Pam.
Look, let me knock off Michael in five minutes.
Weber Hill Road Engineering, business B. Moving on to the next phase of that, a lot of the grant funding has been, made its way through the governor and council process in this next phase of design engineering. They've blessed this agreement, so I'd be looking for the board to award it to Underwood Engineers and authorize me to enter into contract documents to keep the project moving forward.
The whole project grant funded, this part of it?
No, it's a breakdown, I think, is 80%, I don't have those, I don't have those numbers in front of me. It's largely, I think it's about 80, 20, 80 federal and state, and about 20 local. But I think we've gotten additional grants, so.
If it's an insurance company, it should step in.
It definitely should, but.
Probably will.
Probably will. I think it's about 80, 20 is the question.
And what's on Weber Hill, contracts from Underwood? So this will be about 16% of the bill of cost, probably?
Yes, I think that's about right. That'd be great.
Go for it.
Are you done?
Yep. I was just. I moved authors, authorized the expenditure of up to $163,750 in 2022, warrant article number five, and authorized a document to sign contract documents with Underwood Engineers.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Tomorrow?
Which one?
We'll have it done tomorrow?
Yeah. I had it done today, but I didn't want to send it out four hours before the meeting, so we'll table that for next week. Item C. E, we can just make note, the October expenditure report got sent out, largely consistent with September, no drastic changes. Just going to Weber Hill while we're still kind of talking about it, just for update, what we're looking at in terms of design, hoping to be completed next summer or into the fall, winter, bidding early in 2024, and construction hopefully in 2024. Take that opportunity for kind of a general schedule update on that.
Do you email the cybersecurity?
I'm sorry, I thought that's what you were saying tomorrow. What were you saying for tomorrow?
Just the Underwood contract.
Oh, I'll get that back to you tomorrow. No, I did not send out the cybersecurity policy. That's what I was saying I had done this morning, so I'll send that out for you to review for next week.
Anybody have any questions on the October expenditure report, where we are? We're doing some areas not so good and others.
As long as we know what those areas are and they're consistent, usually okay.
We probably have 30 seconds.
I hear the bells tolling.
Do you?
Yeah. They're stopped.
I don't think they quite made it to six. They did? All right, well, in the public hearing, this public hearing is pursuant to RSA 41-14A. It's regarding the proposed donation of tract two identified in the deed for 38 Sullivan Way, which is at map 37, law 20. The owner wishes to deed that to the town. This is the second public hearing. Public hearing open. Comments? I think it was a pretty well discussed. I think it was a pretty well discussed with the public hearing and also presented the planning board. What's that?
I think our friends might be coming in, so.
Further comment? Public hearing is closed, or is it continued or?
Nope, it's closed and then so look forward, expect a vote on it next week, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. DeRusso, welcome.
Start reading at 5:59.
I did start about 15 seconds early, so if there's anything you'd like to, we appreciate the fact that you came.
It sounds like those approvals now point to.
They are, next week the vote on it.
Yeah.
This was, this was the second public hearing, which we're required to hold. And then next week would be the vote.
Very good.
And we let the board know that you presented to the planning board last week, so that's been handled as well.
About six o'clock tonight.
We do have some committees that have some openings that you'd be interested in.
I see that.
Maybe later on.
After we finish the house.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joe, welcome.
Do I have a?
Thank you. Let's start with cemetery budget. Free street forward, minimal increase, and a lot has to do with energy and electric electricity and the petroleum base, the fertilizers have gone up. But all the other, staying the same.
Were you able to get everything?
What's that?
Are you able to get everything as far as?
Yeah, you'll see here, like in the beautification, we didn't do that much, but there is still some work pending on that. And some of it was to deal with just not trying to get contractors. One of the projects we need to do in the tunnel is to do some masonry work and make a better entrance to it. And we're hoping to get that done this year, but it just doesn't look like it's going to. We have some tree work that will get done this year, but everything we need seems to be going pretty well. And some of the costs and stuff, some of it guessing game, but things seem to be going pretty well. Since we started fertilizing the grass at the cemeteries, they did look a lot better. The grass has really taken off in there. Obviously, with the real improvements on old hill, the next year we're going to make, improve painting the sign, we have to trade the sign. But they're, they're in pretty good shape. There's not a lot that needs to be done there at this point. And highway is more of the same, we're doing pretty good there. We were pretty fortunate with some grants and coming in, coming under our road contract this year. We're able to do one of the roads that we were planning on, Arrowcrest was planned for last year. And due to the way things went this year, we were able to get that done. So it is going to help for, for next year. They think, once again, is the fuel or the cost of some of the materials. The state, we were pretty fortunate this year that we were paying off under the state's contract last year on fuel. And the cost was approximately, we were paying $2.25 a gallon for diesel, which is remarkable where things have been. That ended, I believe, in September. I've been trying to get a price from the state as far as next year's contract, but I wasn't informed they haven't entered into a contract. They're basically staying with the market. Right now, we're paying approximately $3.25 a gallon for diesel, but we have no idea. They can't really give me any prediction where that is going to go. So we have been doing pretty well there. Going through, we've had to make like an, make a change, not so much an increase, but. So with the Southwood Justice Street project, we've created a lot more green catch stations, which is going to expand the catch basin cleaning come springtime. But we've been able to make adjustments to that line and it's going to stay essentially the same. We just broken it down a little bit more.
Where's that, Joe?
Uh, it's under outside labor and rental.
So with that one, my question on that was just the fact that this year it wasn't really fully utilized?
And the reason that being is a lot of it was the like the sidewalk project. We didn't, the outside rental of equipment, we were able to basically complete that project significantly less than what was expected. So we didn't have to tap into any of those resources. The same thing with the, with the fire pond. We were able to, we were able to complete that project well under, so we didn't get into any of those resources.
You said there's some stuff you're planning to do in the next couple of weeks as well?
Yeah, some of that stuff hasn't come back in yet either. We're trying to get caught up on brush on the side of the road. I'm going to use some of that this year, like Matthews Road is a priority. Matthews Road is really getting somewhat dangerous in places where the brush is overtaking the road. We're doing some of it, but I'm going to use an outside contract to help get caught up on that. But the main reason, like I said, some of that is still pending, but the main reason why we're unders is just the way these projects, everything came together perfectly this year. We haven't found any of those spots, which is good, hope it continues that way.
And with the tree cutting, what, what, we, we, what came in so far below exactly because couldn't get to them or?
The, the tree, no, we have still some pending. We do have some pending, the tree budget is going to be completely used up. Yeah, they just, for example, last week we were over on Blake and Goodell. There were a bunch of hazardous pine, there were large scale pines that we used to turn onto. That was, they were very dangerous, so those have been removed now, just waiting for invoices, so some of that is like that. Like the solid budget, that hasn't been posted yet, but there's approximately $50 dollar purchase sold that's pending right now. Those invoices are being paid, so there'll be a little bit of money left in the solid budget, but, but not much.
Did you, did you see the pricing to support maintaining?
Yes, I was fully, so it's been two years that we've come well under each year on solid budget. I was prepared to make a decrease in that this year, but it's gone up $30. It's gone from 70, approximately $72 a ton to almost $100 a ton. Yeah, yes, and everything is like that, everything from cold birds to across the gravel and so forth. So initially I was thinking we could decrease that, but with the, with the cross, I just hold different position this year. We'll have to see how it goes. We're really in shape right now with what we have for the stockpile, but starting off, we've solved the already three pines this year.
And then with regard to the coal patch, you and Michael are off by 10% for what we are looking, so can you all discuss that?
Yeah, that was because he initially filled it out with Arrowcrest in the plan for 2023 and he ended up being able to pay that this year. So we inserted Sapper Drive, which was at a lower cost, so it's not a disagreement, just an update.
Yeah, just a portion of Sapper Drive, not all, but the portion of Sapper Drive where we did some repairs last year. It really needs to be overlaid and there's, there's a potential if one of those housing projects goes forward that they're going to absorb some of the costs of that. So, so that is the difference there.
And then with your hardback, your over budget this year is, is the 25 a good number?
25 is a good number and I, thanks to Michael and I discussed that, it is a good number. Partially why we use so much this year was all of the repairs from flooding. But there was also theme providing, a lot of reembolism on some of those. So we should be in good shape with that number for next year. I'm not, I'm not looking to raise it, I think we'll be in a good shape. A lot of the dirt roads this year, we put significant amount of gravel on them, building backs up, which needs to happen from time to time, but it doesn't need to happen every year, just over time, just from dust alone in the summertime, you lose aggregate off the road and then between heavy rains and so forth. And it's been a long time since there, it has been a lot of maintenance and upgrades to the dirt roads. But all of that, all of that money that we used this year really wasn't for the new projects, it was for Commonwealth Hill Road. We should be able to big improvement on East Shore Road, Atkins Hill Road. And like I said, we're fortunate to have received some reimbursement for theme line and be able to do additional paving that we didn't plan on, like up beyond Railroad and Street we did improvements.
Now we do on Commonwealth Hill Road.
So no progress on the property. It's, it's a no update. I need to reach back out to the people up there and see if they can communicate with this individual and maybe draft up a letter and send it. But we've done a lot of work up there, we graded the road three times this year. We made a pavement improvement right where the gravel, asphalt turns to gravel, the road is all clustered up. And we paved approximately, you know, 200 feet of that approach. We, we did a bunch of drainage, cleaning the drainage ditch and we graded the road three times this year. So definitely haven't done anything up there, just, we haven't widened one section of road that I wanted to. At the, at that top of that hill gets wide and something in the future, I'd be looking to pave 500, 600 feet further up the hill because the hill is definitely challenged for maintenance and it obviously the road a lot faster than the rest of the road, which is so steep. But overall, the, the road, I had a lot of positive comments this year, just how much work we've done to it, so. Can't, you know, encourage them to get that property on board, which I think if we can, yeah, I did hear you said go ahead. Just, just whole new conversation with that. I think that, that's pretty straightforward and.
Yeah, sand is another one I had and it hasn't been spent significantly, but we've got a really good deal this year on the development project. So was another one I asked, that one we can cut back? And I was advised, not a, not a good one to cut back.
We bought sand this year, I think that we paid for it. So it was just one of the most fortunate things, we did, we took as much as we could fit in the shop. I usually pay any worth $10, $12 a yard for road sand. And I think I was paying $10 a seven yard load for it. So it was very beneficial for contractor. Giving away sand to contractors, but the real good stuff that was road sand, they set aside for us. So we agreed on a $100 a load, we were fired. We, we couldn't fit anymore in our facility, but around the same time we were filling up, the contractor that was doing the excavation sold out to another company and they, they stopped. They took the sand and brought it over to Vermont for that same reason, so we're fortunate. I think everything else was pretty, pretty well being stopped. They're pretty good with equipment repairs and, and tools and supplies. Sometimes with the equipment repair, you just can't predict what's going to, what, when is going to go wrong. But we really had not, with no major breakdowns this year, a part of it is guys in the shop are really good about preventing maintenance and catching leaks before it becomes a problem. And we were fortunate through CIP to upgrade some of the equipment, so we're, we're in pretty good shape. I was approved this year through CIP to buy a six wheel dump truck. I held off partially because of the supply chain. Even if I ordered one, I'm not going to get it this year, I'll be lucky to get it next year. And in the meantime, we've been pursuing actively, pursuing some brands, taking a portion of the truck they paid for. Getting a sample last year, a little prior than last year, a year and a half ago, we went to buy one of those six wheel trucks fully outfitted. It would have come in approximately $170,000, now they're up as high as $200, very, you just simply can't get them. So we're trying to pursue some brands and then maybe there's a possibility that the price comes down. But we're in good shape with the trucks. We don't, we order it here short within the next couple of months. And then yet it will be in good shape, it's not going to be a setback for us at all. But we'll see where it goes and hopefully we get more of the grant, absorb some of the costs and that to get back down where it should be priced for us. Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
How we doing, Josh?
How's it going?
Good, thank you.
We're ready.
Before I forget, how we doing on the outside lights and how we doing on the street light? With the street light.
Um, I didn't really notice the street light at the end, but the main building lights, Hamlet came by two weeks ago. We replaced a controller box and the, above the timer for the outside lights. And tonight I actually were listening to it and it sounded like it was almost skipping over it. And when Hamlet came, it only repaired one light because the other lights, the valves on, don't work. Um, so now I'm just waiting on quote or warning LED lights to replace those. And should be good now, but we've got six outlets up towards the end by the compactors. And we're still blocking up the back, so if people can't hurt them anywhere, it's completely dark, so it's in progress.
Is a street light, is it a, is it a street light, street light that's on?
Yeah, it's one right at the.
Oh, yeah, 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 not quite at the exit, but. Yeah. It's almost in front of Buckland House, kind of.
Okay, yeah, we can submit the, I think it's the reverse source to let them know, so I think they just go up and fix it. So I didn't realize that, I didn't realize that was part of the problem.
Yeah, I didn't even notice that, to be honest.
You gotta go with one a fly on a Saturday to figure those things out. You're always.
He opens at 1:00 AM for you? How'd you know? It's dark.
Well, that's the wrong one.
Yeah, other than that, those in the works and hopefully soon later, so.
Save a lot of electricity if you replace some of those keys.
Yeah, it'll be nice to light the side up in the middle where everybody's driving through. All the storing bill lights work and the glass house lights, house lights work, so it kind of does right now, but still it'd be nice to really build that whole thing up.
How about it, Josh?
All right. Really not a whole lot to it. Major increases were solid waste and cement disposal, and that's due to the contract increase from this year. The other major increase was higher square disposal, and that's a combination of vendor increased costs and volume we've been getting. So with that, $2,400, that's pretty much exactly two loads. And we've got probably three quarters of a load right now, so that'll get us early spring, we'll send it out and then probably send it out again before tire amnesty day and then we should be all set to the year of those, so.
Is your budget for next year, given that it's lower than where you're at right now?
Yeah, that was an increase for you.
I'm saying, is 23's budget number adequate since you're over that number?
Oh, yes, yeah, I have a plan for it and I knew I had the three quarters, so I was kind of just filtering into it with that, so. And some of the minor increases were recyclable disposals, and that's due to fiber markets starting to drop out, which I knew would eventually happen, but the mix paper, I think someone's taking the biggest hit right now. Even then, it's only $50 a ton charged as of now, probably still will drop some more, but fibers like cardboard's going to hold steady for the most part. Plastics shouldn't take too big with it, scrap metal will pretty much stays constant. So I think we just got really lucky passing here and after two years of the market, so. But to go with that, we're separating stuff out, we're going to be getting more for what we're shipping. So we're going to offset it a little at the same point. Instead of sending half loads of just one plastic, we're shipping just full loads of that plastic. So we're going to get the higher end of the market value for it. And right now we're sitting on probably a full load of each plastics and aluminum, just because of where the markets are right now. And the end of the year, so they kind of change everything up. So probably February, I'll be able to ship it out and get a better pricing than I would be ordering right now, so. Got a few things lined up to offset some of the markets and upside some markets too. And then a minor increase was department supplies that Mike and I talked about the other day, of $500. And that's just to go with the trend of going over about $500 past two years. And that's due to it just being a catchall one item.
Do you think that would, just looking at your, your history, would it be better at either 35 or 4,000? Just because you were, you know, you were basically year end for 2021, you were at where you are at the end of October this year?
Yeah.
So it would seem like you'd want to get closer to 4,000? Not that it's a big number, but.
Yeah.
You have savings on your other line items to kind of buy things at the end of the year.
That's what I think this year, yeah, and that's kind of why it's so high over now.
Artificial bump that, that artificially bump that line?
Yeah.
Because there's things you can.
I think that 500.
Have it stocked right here.
And I, I usually go through and try to bulk buy as much as I can. I bought 2,000 pairs of line gloves last year and it lasted all up until last week, so. And usually the items that we do get, we get consistently, so I just buy a whole year's worth, try to knock it all out. And Nick and I were actually working on a breakdown of simple stuff like even sprinkling come up previous to the year, see if we can get a case of it, two cases of grease, even little stuff like that, just in an essay of things here and there, so. And they contributed to the, also to the department supplies this year was all the outside lights, horn traps, horn. Um, horn traps, horn poison, all that kind of stuff, spray cans. So that was at least four hundred bucks worth of just stuff for horns and dealing with all that. So and that'll be another thing. We'll just bulk buy and the traps out over the next year instead of break one or second coming on. So we're gonna get a head start on that and then get all the traps I can reuse. I just did inserts for them now, so. Um, that was another driver for that.
Do you have, people have any suggestions? Cause I think the idea of moving it away was, was a good idea, but then it's like Russian roulette, trying to get there and dump your dance.
Yeah, and I think I found one of the nests conveniently when I was trimming a tree branch by the burn pits, I cut into it and they came out of the tree. So I was able to plug that up and just put a little glue in there and tried to find where they were coming. It was at an underground nest and they'd been burrowing up into it. So I took care of that with Bobcat, but so there, there's gotta be another nest somewhere though. So I'm keeping my eye on it. And I think um, trimming all the trees along the front gate area kind of gives it an opening where we can see if there's any nest up high or anything over there. But I didn't see anything going through, so I'm about mystery. Well, we're, we're gonna get the traps out earlier to try and nip it before it even gets to what it did this year, so.
Some angry, angry voices.
A bit crazy. Luckily I never got stuck. No, no.
Especially when you found that one of the chains.
Yeah. Um, so there was just one major decrease and that was uh, equipment rental. And that went down.
I'm sorry, Joseph. Gosh. Equipment, what was the last word?
Uh, equipment rental.
Rentals, okay, thank you.
Um, cause hopefully we won't have to worry about getting skinny rentals here. Um, but the game plan we've been working on between Nick and I and some of you guys in the glass house, Charlie, John, John. Um, we're gonna separate, you know, the smaller deposits, the fifteen centers like the limited volumes. We're just gonna do a shipment once every year or two. So we'll really only be renting the haul once a year if that volume. We're basically just trying to hit the easier ones to get and fifteen cents a ton, fifteen bucks will add up pretty quick, so. Little things like that, we're gonna try and up the revenue stream for it. Um, and little things we've been doing to try and uh, divert some waste from the C and D and the MSW labeled the dip in. So we've got clean wood, compost, um, porcelain and all lined up now. So it's, if somebody's got, has even planned to, instead of throwing it into the compactor, they can toss in the bin or anything two by fours or stuff like that. Instead of tossing it right into the compactor, they can put it in a designated bin and make it easier than dropping it back or having to go up to it to continue. So that'll help out. Um, and also scrap metal sorting, we've been sorting out different grades. Uh, so not only save on um, hauls for the metal disposal, but also to get a higher revenue stream for those as well. Um, and that's electric motors. We've been getting gas iron, uh, number one, number two copper and yellow brass. So we've been sorting out different grades now and I think we really want to see a big bump in revenue for that. So it's a, a little thing for more to improve on and everything, but um, yeah, any questions?
What do you think you're gonna make on that? You're gonna split charge it for the burn pit?
Yes, um, we've done.
What was that, as far as?
Just contractors, yes.
Right, but you know, you know how many you get every year, so.
Yeah, um, we've already done a hundred and sixty dollars on compost loads. And then I believe two hundred on brush already since October. Um, so I expect once we hit the springtime, we'll get all the contractors coming through. It's early on, add some extra revenue, but also deter people from, from a blue moon. But so it'll save both ways. It'll save labor and we'll make a lot of that, but.
We're gonna have to pay disposal on the action.
No, no, I've been using that as uh, just for flaws of burn pit and not the hazards. And so we don't have to test it, so.
The masks required?
I just changed that. Yeah.
Did you change it to something or just remove it?
Uh, blue permits required now. So I, I put a nice.
Blue permits, stickers.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have one?
I didn't know. I didn't know what color they were.
Oh, yeah, they, I just barely got it like a month ago, so I'm still lining.
Keep an eye out for him, Josh.
I should talk to number two, three and four.
What color are they, were they previous green?
Green, yeah. So this will basically just make it easier to be able to track on people who have moved their, moved a keen and still coming here to drop bring their stuff. So I think I'll do, I think I'll do.
So where do we pick those up? Is that a town hall or is that from you?
The both, town hall or us. Um, and I gave town hall, I believe five hundred stickers. And they said they're gonna work, they're um, asking people and they've registered the vehicles that they want a sticker right there. So I think that's gonna cut out a lot of cluster for us from Saturdays and people want stickers or some of that, so. That would be unofficial.
Okay, so is there, just planning for next year, an opportunity to use that sign to encourage people to rinse their bottles and cans? Cause that may help with, with the wash.
Yeah, yeah, and I keep saying this, if I wanna get a, a little town bulletin board and provide the um, aluminum just for postings and stuff like that. To anything, whether it's a closing date or something coming up, uh, town meeting or something like that. So that, that'd probably be where I would post it.
Well, the gentleman behind you designs and builds very good signboards, outstanding ones.
Urgent, I might need one of those.
Probably still has the template.
Yeah.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Do you have your Bobcat?
Yes, yep. Eighty five hours on it already. Had it since twenty second.
And it's everything you need.
Yeah, yeah, very good, very good. Um, we set up a maintenance schedule for it and done the, we've gone to man, good safety and maintenance schedule on that end. So we're just gonna wait to pick up the stuff and.
Little pink masts and stuff and all that.
Yep, it's three hundred pounds over our old one, so it's worked out very well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael.
Thanks, Josh.
Carpenter Home renovation, Town Hall renovation, Stanley Station renovation, West Swansea Fire Station renovation. Cool and boring, Richardson Park renovation. Um, the other thing before, I'm not Josh's job, but it's really important. We give support to Anne Portner through the, through the uh, kind of loss committee meeting and things like that. It's been phenomenal for years. Anne kind of comes in, focuses on, she does a lot of work, but by far greatest ally and Andy works a lot of hours with her that nobody even knows about. Does an amazing job. So if you guys already know that, but that's extra that we should know.
Thank you.
Um, so things up. Amy Hall are doing well, moving along. Uh, Alice, I think is with us on Zoom, maybe another board member or two, a board director, maybe a member, she might be with us too. Um, moving along pretty much the way we figured they would. She's overwhelmingly popular, but she's running out of space quickly. That'd be awesome when she did it. So I've got these two drawings here, I've got the full size plan and I've got the expanded plan. I only put the yellow ones because this is the barn is the area that we're considering.
Where's this one?
It's in the barn, yeah. So, you know, when I, when we were working with the committee, um, for all those, those weeks and months and other people. There's not a single person that ever walked through this building once and said, geez, you know, we really could use more walls. We all know that the walls wouldn't really hold it, hold it back, you know? And uh, so we were kind of going back and forth. Uh, Alice has spent a tremendous amount of time kind of trying to figure things out, especially with the state licensing, you know, what would work best. Um, the uh, the calculations for staffing and everything is very difficult to work through. And what we're looking at doing is, is, is removing the walls that are pink here, okay? These, these are in the new area, quote unquote, new area between the barn and the main house. And the reason we're going for those largely is because it's a manufacturer trust is above that. Those walls wouldn't have gone in and they are. So if we get them gone here, you can say I put in some light duty posts um, to try to stick with her theme, her nature theme. I'd probably just harvest a couple of beech trees or something off my property and put them in there to kind of guss you up a little bit. We're gonna go super, super low tech. I'm gonna save the sheet rock, some of the sheet rock that we demoed on, but some of it. And what we'll do is we'll case the open with that sheet rock and use a bull nose, file, corn bead. Um, so no trim, nothing like that, no sharp edges. It'll be, it'll look good. And uh, unfortunately it leaves a smaller dent in the child. So that's, that's kind of a good spot that we got going on there. Um, right now, she's at a really good point for the space that she's got, but unfortunately she's also at a break even point. We had been given probably more uh, more reason to believe that we're gonna get a grant done. We're gonna get them where we actually got. Uh, they decided they're gonna take the grant and they were gonna break it into uh, smaller pieces to spread it among more people, which is fine, but it was smaller pieces. So right now she's sitting at a break even point. Um, and uh, we were hoping that we could get some help from the town for the twenty seven hundred dollars. And I'm hoping is gonna take care of the removal of the electricity in those walls we want to take down. That's really the only real cost on this. I met up there with uh, my preferred electrician for this. He's going to do it in that timeframe with almost no notice. He's really happy about that. Um, in this case it'd be Ben, Ben Prescott, local guy, ex-pier. And uh, Ben's also gonna help me with the town hall and has been helping me with the town hall. And uh, Josh, Danny, others have been working on the wash station. So trying to spread it out amongst, amongst our people and uh, leave them apart. But that's kind of where we are right now is, is we could use uh, use a little help to get that part of it done. She's put a ton of money into um, putting paint on the lead and capsizing lead. There's a little bit more of that than what we thought there'd be. And uh, she's spent a lot of hours, a lot of time doing that, a lot of volunteers. She's put in some doorways, um, half doors to keep kids from going places that we don't want kids to go with the rest. Put a lot of time and energy into it. Um, did a great job cleaning it out, getting rid of really what was our stuff. And uh, Josh was also, once again, Josh again, all we had to do was ask him. And uh, the volunteers showed up on the weekend and said, they're coming down, you know, could you help, you know, just make sure they don't get too much of a hassle? And Josh was like, oh, make sure, you know, they get hassled, we'll help them load it, we'll take right care of them. Yeah, can't beat them. So I got good partners every month, though.
Oh, the twenty seven hundred is for the electrical.
So the electrical works at West Main, what we're hoping right now, I asked, I asked Alice to run some numbers because, you know, it's all great. So with the additional capacity right there, and I like what she's doing here, she's got a thing she's calling new practical enrollment versus overall capacity. So she's basically saying, look, you know, I know what I could have, which is forty five, you know, going for thirty eight. So there'd be an increase of eleven uh, children. With that increase of eleven children, which you could get into that space, she'd be bumping up uh, between fifty seven hundred, between ninety percent and a hundred percent of that, of that number. She'd be bumping up uh, almost six thousand dollars or the lower six thousand dollars, depending on how it pans out. That would be.
What was the six thousand?
Would be the increase in, in.
Revenue.
Revenue, yeah.
So that would come from eleven, so.
Yeah, that would be.
Per day, per week?
And that would be weekly, uh, I think two, no, uh, totally weekly, expensive to be here all. It was a month, a month. That would be per month. It should be being six thousand a month, which would be pretty monumental at this point. It would, I, I think when we finally settle in on our monthly rent, when it comes time for the new lease, it's gonna be quite a bit more than what we thought it was gonna be. When we restarted this, we're not, we're ready, we're gonna bring it back up, do it again. Um, it's gonna be more.
You said the needs out there.
So yeah, the needs definitely out there. So her numbers are really cool. So the, she's, she's got um, she's got almost the majority Swansea kids now. And she's got, and then when you add in the three, four, five businesses that parents don't live in Swansea but work at in Swansea. And her willingness is overwhelming the majority of Swansea. She knows the desire to give preference to Swansea, so she has been giving that preference to Swansea. So it's, it's, it's doing its job. I mean, it's, you know, it's actually got more Swansea people in it than, than, you know, when we had the car for home going, certainly towards the end. Um, and that's been great. So she's been able to keep, keep track of her own. Um, we've got a bunch of little ones popping up to try to hobble EVA. I, the man, this is so weird. I mean, people call her almost in tears, sometimes in tears begging to plead. She can't take what she can take. Uh, right now the constraint that the state puts on, um, and I'm not saying it's good or it's bad, just what it is. The constraint that they put on these daycares depending on the age of the child is really ours. And babies, you don't, you can't even make many babies. It's one for, one staff, four of them. And then it was up incrementally, but very granularly. So you get, you know, you can't exactly have people come that day and say, ah, my number's not working. I'm gonna have to go home. So uh, you should try to keep your staff and the little lecture, just to keep it going.
So in this, in this request, this is twenty seven hundred for electrical, not the rest of the work.
Rest of the work we're gonna take care of. The board will take care of. I don't know, we'll, we'll, we'll get the rest of it done. We just really need that electrical work.
This is that little bedroom that had like the little bell fused box or something?
Yes.
Yeah, yep.
It was really kind of a hanky.
Old stuff anyway.
It was a pretty hanky setup.
Right.
Yeah.
A lot of angles to that wall.
Yeah, but it got us our sixteen through. It's, you know, we try to maximize it that kind of industry.
I'm just saying, you have the same point of building itself, that old garage should be covered up.
Yeah, unfortunately the twenty seven hundred is gonna cover that. All we're doing is just.
Yeah, in that room.
Well, it would be nice to eventually get it all up, yeah, yeah. It's something, it's something we need to look at.
We can that now, since we're, we're in.
Right now, the, well, because right now the goal is, is, so this is the real kicker here. So part of the, the whole dilemma, this whole um, progress process suspended is of course is, you know, we're trying to fix the Ferris wheel. It's actually operational. She's already running. She moved right in, she kept running, and she needs to keep running. We've got a week between Christmas and New Year where she's gonna close. And we gotta get everything done that week. And that includes the space that's already there that needs, you can't get repainted, the furniture, all that good stuff that you gotta do in a case like this. Um, inventory, art supplies, all that good stuff. So we're just trying to open it up, make it so that we can get them uh, okay through licensing, we can get the, the new children in there. And then, yeah, we'd love to make that another phase project. I think um, I think Alice was recognized, I know I've recognized, and there's a big topic at the last board meeting last Wednesday, actually. Um, was we've gotta do a lot more way out ahead planning this stuff. So that I'm not here, we, we go, we need to do something again. That's just, that's not a sustainable way to go about, right? So, you know, I'm, I'm learning how to be a landlord, you're learning how to be business people and uh.
Is the fuse box still there?
Yeah, it's, it's, is it, this. You know, it's, it's, it's there. It's right through the corner. The nice thing about, about it is, it slides right, but the nice thing about it is probably, I don't know how many number you're supposed, it doesn't matter. But it was sometime while Judy was there, I had kind of finally had enough of it all. And um, we hired an electrician to go in and chase everything. So every outlet, every switch, every everything's got a label on it of where it originates. So we can at least do things a little more efficiently than we used to do. So we should be able to redo that at some point, some way, depending on what it actually operates.
So we're allowed to operate with a fuse, fuse panel? Oh, yeah, it's up to lock it. I mean, it's.
Yeah, oh, sure.
Well, uh.
Really, but you're just still, you're still using that, but two, if you're on, it's the same, you're not a question.
It's really a superior system. I wish I'd have remembered that.
Yeah. Yours wasn't. That's all, that's okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
I do remember Jerry Bell saying the same thing, yours is.
Yeah, it's really the best, really the best system.
Still isn't?
Though it isn't.
Where's it coming from?
Twenty twenty two budget?
Was it on your list?
It was not. I didn't have that in my.
But it could be.
But it will be, should be.
Twenty seven enough?
We hope so. Last weekend, I mean, like I said, it went up there with it. We're gonna, we'll be doing some extra ton of stuff for the rest of it, then then's, then's good. We'll feel pretty good, probably, fair enough chances. There's gonna be a fair amount of wall that's still gonna be left above what we open up. so maybe we're gonna just some exposed junk, you know, junk spines, we'll keep it good and we'll cover it, and we'll just tie some stuff off that way, it's okay, we're not gonna get carried away with it, we just wanna make it safe and accessible, which I don't wanna think in a system if I can operate with the sprinklers, better than the ceiling lighting, and then having that that popper, I just don't wanna, I hate it, I'm not that you can.
I hate it.
There's one spot where we have to take out the closet, we'll have to do something anyway, but that's just life.
Find it. Sure it's enough.
No.
Should, should it be more than three thousand?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Doors are okay, and the doors are okay, and the ramp and all that, I mean, is there anything else that?
Oh, there's stuff that we're gonna have to do in the future, but again, according to the, to the, to the lease, you know, she's on the front of that stuff, we gotta sit down and look at all that, this is, I'm just trying to get this, this one done for now, we really, we, we gotta get better, you're covering these guys with the board, the more apprehension and better listening, how we're gonna work forward, and I'm hoping this starts to afford that, A financially, and B fills up more space, and she can really see what's gonna happen, it, it's been set up probably two, three different times differently than what we usually thought it was, first years I thought it was gonna be again, but it's just the nature of working in a, at that, that building and learning as you go, and um, yeah, so let's say three thousand, we'll call it good.
I was gonna say three.
I appreciate the help I do.
Oh, shit.
Concesses is fine.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you guys, appreciate the time to do it.
Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, board, it sounds like they're.
They're, they're fantastic, board, they really are, they're made up of very, very good people who are already on other boards and have a lot of work, I don't know, they just, they're just, they're really helpful.
Forty-three weeks, so next Christmas, probably.
Yep.
Exactly. Start planning now.
Well, it was funny, the other night you, we, we were talking about, you know, what, what budget you wanted to run on all the rest of that stuff, and she was gonna go June, July, and I said, you know, you're gonna have to come here, and that means you're gonna do this budget thing twice, and that's probably not what you wanna do, so we're gonna be on, on, on course with you guys. All right, I'll just say.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
See you tomorrow, like, Cameron.
Appreciate it.
Have a good night, Mike.
Your expenditures.
So we had talked about when we did the third quarter financial analysis, but we looked like we're in pretty good shape, so trying to be proactive for things that aren't, you know, planned somewhere or in a budget for next year, or things that are, and then we can subtract, so I solicited from departments, um the list that you see before you is what I received back, um so obviously I don't have the three thousand on there, but that's not, you know, hugely material, um obviously the first, the first item was a hundred and ten thousand towards the addition um on West Station, which I believe the shell is completed over there, so made good progress, fortunately if we waited another week, I think we would have been in trouble, but um Joe came through, so that's another, another success for Mike, even though in his beat himself up way, he doesn't see it that way, but um so anyway, but so it took that hundred and ten thousand off the three thirty-five that um we projected, so that gets us to around two twenty-five, I think there's a reasonable case for really everything other than the last few um vehicles, I just think, you know, if something of that magnitude, I think probably should just keep it in the rotation like we have it, um.
Uh Alyssa in chat wanted to say thank you, we truly appreciate it, of course she left on the chair, I think.
That was, got it.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
It's creative spelling, so, great, thanks, Josh. So I, I can either go item by item if you want, um or not, but um like I said, either these items, couple of them are not currently, uh they currently don't have a pot like the new voting booths, could be something we put in, in next year's budget, but.
Why do we need the voting booths?
Um, combination of.
We need a new configuration, how people get to the voting, but why do we need new booths?
Just the age and condition, uh these ones are, be easier to set up, might be easier to store, um not necessarily a have to, it's just something we've looked at, um the old ones are retired, but we can keep using them. Something that Joe and Heather were working on as an option, and they are expensive, no doubt about it, um but I think the main thing is be easier to set up, um I think the other ones are getting kind of rusty, and they're just, it's gonna be something comes out sooner or later, so, or not, not an urgent, it has to be this year, it's just something that they've been talking about and put it forward. And a couple of others, like, you know, mobile data terminals for the PD, those are like the laptops and the cruisers, those are in the CIP plan, but they hadn't been in the past, so that was kind of one of the bigger um increase items, so if we purchase them this way, we've done radios at the end of the year sometimes, so it just kind of helps um create, uh avoid the need to create a significant increase in one of the line items, so, but again, or we could do, have to do any of it, really, so it's up to you, but um we had asked for this list, so that was what we came back with.
You can pay for the capital, maybe go minimize on the taxes.
So that's what it would do if we don't spend it, is it just goes to the unbalance, yeah, so.
So that would uh, that would mean we'd have roughly fifty, fifty or sixty thousand from the original three thirty-five.
Mm-hmm.
Since we'd already spent a hundred and ten.
Great.
Full total without vehicles is one forty-eight, so it's looking like seventy-four. I, I, all I'm saying is if we, we spent a hundred and ten out of a hundred and sixty-five or a hundred and seventy, let's say, so it would leave us with sixty.
Didn't say that part, a hundred and ten out of what?
We had three thirty-five.
Right.
We spent a hundred and ten of it.
Right.
And if Sly wanted half of the three thirty-five.
Oh, half of the three thirty-five, okay.
Reduce the tax rate, it would leave us with about, about fifty or sixty thousand. What, what effect would that have on the tax rate?
Hundred and fifty thousand on tax rate? Can you uh run that number while you discuss? I'll do it.
The two, the two biddies are pretty much taken care of through the CIP planning, so. So if we included the three thousand, we have about seventy-five, so we'd be spending a hundred and eighty-five or thereabouts, three thirty-five, which would still leave a hundred and fifty, that's what you're calculating.
Hundred and fifty, that is a hundred and forty, fifty is twenty-four cents on tax rate.
It's not significant. I was thinking that if we're looking at six cents, it increases the operating budget for next year. If we take out the data terminal and we take out the, the HERS tools, because those are all recalculated in the CIP, we'll end up roughly, the rest of these items plus the three thousand, some number close to one head to do that. Any idea what a mechanical compression device is, is that a CPR kind?
Yeah.
Yeah. We don't wanna do anything like that until we decide on EMS report.
Yep, makes sense.
We could probably bump that SCBA full station up a little bit if, in order to get a better one used.
Yeah, considering what they go for in new, I thought that.
Right.
The chief did good work on getting that used quote, and it's an enclosed one versus the current one, which if something goes wrong when it's getting filled, I guess, can explode, and sounds like a, sounds like a good, good purchase, and obviously used ones, that's better, cheaper than new, so better than nothing. So it sounds like take out the mobile data terminals, compression device, HERS tools, and the cars, right?
Cars and add in the.
And add in the three thousand.
Yeah.
Yep. Mobile.
Here's a shoe. Thank you.
Mobile data terminals.
If you add, I've got it now.
Uh four down from the top or so, replace four mobile data terminals. No problem, uh mechanical compression device. Hydraulic HERS tools.
Yeah.
And then the two cars at the bottom.
That was the last one?
The car, the, the two cars, the fire and police cars.
Both of them?
Yeah.
Okay, so one, two, three, four, five items?
Yes.
To take out?
Yeah, and add in the three thousand for the Carpenter home renovations. Sounds good to me.
SCBA full station maybe.
Okay. Sounds good, thank you. You okay with that, Ken?
I think it's just about sixty-five.
Right, that's a. Reasonable solution, thank you.
Your business?
Covered most of it.
Any non-publics?
Absolutely.
Oh, wow, right, right.
You've got a bunch of minutes done sealed, too, what's that?
I see a nice ad in the paper.
PD?
Yeah.
Good.
Is it working?
Not yet, because I think that was a renewal of one, so, and it's got a few different publications, so.
She retired?
Who? Depends, uh, depends if she moves in with her mom or not, but no, she doesn't have a. Maybe in a moment of passion working on the new financial software. Two, two to four years, straight from time to time.
So it's not imminent.
No, it's not imminent, we.
Did everybody log on in, did they check?
I just got this right here.
Care that out, he's gonna be getting electronic.
Well, for his dead body.
Oh, my dead body, but the, the print's getting smaller and smaller.
It's okay, the banker, the banker, yeah, it's okay, the bankers can read it.
Sure, Josh. Anybody online have any hands raised, Josh?
Nobody online.
Thank you. Second. Okay, bye.
Bye.